Okay, good evening, everybody. The special meeting for the Rome Board of Education, date is September 20th, time is 6:00 p.m. Please rise for the party's allegiance.
Unallegiance.
To the right of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time, I think we're gonna reverse our agenda here and let's get our presentation update first. And we'll talk about the other funding. You folks hit the floor?
Yes, Brian Fitzgerald, Zoom friends a little bit. Well, what we thought we'd do is we think we know some of the questions, so we thought we'd try to answer those and then whatever Q and A you want, obviously, our team's here for that. So we'll try to be efficient. So thank you for providing us a little bit of time this evening, beautiful fall day, we'll take advantage of. So again, Brian Fitzgerald, I'm our SVP for the region, New York and New Jersey. And then we have Mike Wilson, who's our area AGM up here at Central New York. And then Mark Whippman, who's our location manager, you know, right down the street. So Mark, you know, started in June, and I keep telling him, you know, it's a nice easy role we gave him, so he's started in June. He's been rolling a little bit since then, but obviously a great hire for us, and I won't give him a terrible resume, he's got a ton of experience. So, um, yeah, I just have a very brief opening, I'm gonna hand over to Mike to talk through the items we think are the relevant ones.
I have to interrupt for a second. Mr. Passault, if you please put a mask on.
Sure.
Thank you.
So, sorry about that, thanks for, I didn't catch. So, you know, it's been a heck of a four months for us, as you know, right, getting in here. And I'll tell you, you know, we know startups are always going to be challenging. I think throw on top of it, everything that's going on way beyond Rome, right from a driver staffing standpoint, adding the flood. And then candidly, adding a bunch of things we could be doing better, and in the past, hopefully, most of those, you know, that makes for what we understand is an impact, right? And we do want to talk through some of that today. Yeah, obviously, you know, one late pickup, one late drop off, it's a significant event, right, for a child or a family, and we get that. And we do hope we can explain some of what we're working on, where we're going here, and really, you know, be able to answer any questions you have as to what happens from here on out. So I think we had about six areas that we were pretty sure you'd want to hear about, and I'm gonna turn it over to Mike, who's gonna kind of walk through those. Obviously, you know, if we're getting to run on sentence, just stop us, Q and A as we go, discussion.
All right, so I'm Mike Wilson, as he said, I'm the area general manager of Central New York. Rome does fall under my jurisdiction as far as responsibilities go. And like you said, we do have about six areas that we can discuss and talk about that we figured you guys want to know about. Biggest one being driver staff. And I'm sure you guys are curious as to where we stand, what we, what we look like. So upfront, we have 57 drivers, okay? We've got some off on medical, we're supplementing with three staff members, we're supplementing with four people from Watertown and Skinny Atlas. I don't know how, but they happen to have people that we can borrow right now, so we're borrowing them so that we can help, help Rome get up off its feet. So, uh, we also just hired three new drivers with existing CDLs. Takes about a two-week period to get them fully integrated in the system, get their 19A on, get them into the, uh, system and get them moving. So we should have three more coming up very soon. We have a few drivers in training, and this is training from scratch, all the way up to CDL, which takes a little bit of time. So, as Brian put it, we do continue to put the full corporate rest on the remaining headcount needs. This includes sign-on referral bonuses, as well as coordinated advertising campaign. I've had my central New York recruiter here in Rome, she was here on Wednesday, Thursday, Friday last week, she's here today. And then she's gonna be here again Thursday and Friday of this week. So she's been pushing all of our recruiting efforts in this area, not to mention any grassroots recruiting that we have going on. I know we've done a lot, we've, you know, we try and bring people in, and it's rocking people in right now.
Mike, what's the number you're striving for?
As many as I can, yeah.
Okay.
Just so, uh, just because we have a baseline number of.
Seventy, eighty?
Seventy-two is, is really where we'd like to be on, on a, on a day-to-day. But I have challenged every one of my, my location managers, you can get that, you know, 130%, 140% of your current staff, and please do. I think it was, you know, sixty-five, we knew we had to hit seventy-two was the enough baked in to have the wiggle room. But Mike's right, I've offered like, you know, full-stake dinners to any location manager, or anywhere in New York, right?
Yeah, yeah, so I mean, it is, I mean, it is one of those things, because I can use them, Syracuse right down the road, I mean, they're, they're short, and I mean, this is all over my area. I just had the same conversation with the city of Syracuse about this. So just in my area alone, I'm short eighty-one drivers, and I've only got nine locations. So driver shortage is still kicking us around at the moment.
Did the announcement today, or, no, today, right, it was Governor Hopeless announced today, the changes? How will that impact what you're able to do, and will you or will you not be? My coworkers, National Guard, actually got an email today inquiring about availability. Is that something that you're looking into?
Yeah, I'm gonna take that one. We, we partner with Buffalo, and I was on a call this last Wednesday or Thursday with the governor's office and our Buffalo partner. And to joint plan this, I do believe some of the conversations led to what happened over the weekend. What the governor's office told us was they don't see, and I saw it in the governor's release, that the National Guard's a little tricky, it's not gonna happen right away. There's some serious safety and liability concerns, and so they're looking into that, but I don't, I don't know that that's a quick one. I think some of the other things you saw in the announcement, you know, we got on with our Buffalo partner and pushed, you know, they said, what can we do to help? We said, well, you can help us with DMV, you can help us with some of the other things.
With some of those as well, right.
Yeah, some of those things in Governor Hopeless's announcement were part of that discussion. But what they told us was they're gonna look into that National Guard answer, but they don't think that's a short-term solution for Buffalo.
Well, and just so the public knows, with the dialogue that I had, again, with my friend who's the guardsman today, is these are people with day jobs now. And they do their guard time there, one weekend a month, two weeks a year type of thing. So it's not like these are people, but she said what they really were looking to were people who were already military-trained to drive large vehicles and looking to them if they were not employed. So, you know, it's not like they're people who are just sitting.
You're batting right, you're batting right at my corridor too, because I'm retired, Andy, Mike, which is an army trucker.
Right.
So there are a lot of differences, yes. It's not untrainable differences, but the problem we have in New York and Governor Hopeless's office will have to give us some reprieve before that will even work, is we have to get all these soldiers 19A qualified. And a 19A record, I mean, it's an extensive process that could take up two, three weeks. So it wouldn't be an immediate, short-term solution. If she approved everything, it would be two, three weeks down the road before everybody can get on their books. Unlike Massachusetts where they can just come in with their bus drivers and it's good.
So it's our laws that are New York laws, okay? That helps. Because the media presents it as a sense of, here's an immediate fix, and people need to understand it's not that.
Yeah, yes and no. I mean, we can't get a soldier into a seat today.
Okay.
It's just, it's not gonna happen, unless there are massive reprieves on 19A. Now, there are plenty of soldiers out there that are capable of driving buses, they're licensed to do it, but they're not licensed to do it with our students on there. And I know as a soldier, I might, you know, I might have some, uh, some, some fun times on a bus, so. A lot of push-ups on the bus. I saw Mike take our training test in the bowling alley parking lot, well, let's leave him in it. All right, so questions around recruiting, or I move on to the next subject? Have I answered everything?
Is it okay if I ask?
Sure, we'll allow it, yeah.
Okay, I'm Karen Berry from the Rome Central. I was wondering, because we understood there was a bus driver shortage last spring. Were you experiencing that same shortage in your central New York region, including cities near and around us?
Since, since the pandemic, it has just multiplied.
I guess I'm asking that so that was when the contract was awarded and you took it over. So were we aware all summer long that we were going to be experiencing these shortages, and it would probably result in some of the experiences our students?
Let me quietly answer your question. Every school bus pop in New America is short-staffed.
But I was asking if you're a company.
Well, I couldn't, I couldn't answer. Well, and Mike, I can. No, I will tell you, and thank you for the clarification on which March. This past March.
Right, this past spring.
Yeah, and what was happening with us and here and other places is we knew that the shortage, um, we knew the pandemic hurt the shortage. What we, what we did not know is exactly how that would play out numerically. One thing that happened for all returning businesses, ours and any competitor of ours, is that you had a lot of these folks that when you, the witching hour, so to speak, was in the summer. When you said, okay, you've been off, now come back. And at that point, you didn't know what the drop-off was gonna be. I will tell you, it was a little worse than I think any of us were expecting, where you said, hey, I have fifteen people, I'm thinking fourteen come back, and then you find out that five of those folks might have tagged out when it was time to call them back. So we knew there was going to be a challenge, I don't think we could pinpoint exactly what the numbers were gonna be until we got into the summer. And again, that stands for every customer, not Rome-specific, but it does apply to you. I hope that answered it a little bit.
Very.
Sure.
So you said you needed seventy-two, and you had fifty-seven, so how, how are you dealing with the fifteen?
All right, so the way that it's set up here is, is Rome, Rome has seven to eight drivers at any one time. So based on route population, we automatically take eight off the top of that, or seven, whichever Rob and his team have. So if they got seven drivers, we'll pull seven routes off the top. So when we talk route population, we're talking total overall route for Rome, not just first student responsibility. So in the end, so if you got seventy-two routes, we're looking at covering sixty-four of those. So, but what we'd like to do is be able to cover every single route the city has with spare factors.
You're saying the district is covering X number of routes, is that what, you just went through, you said nine?
Eight, yeah.
Okay.
I have one additional question, and I'm sorry, so how, can you give us about a percentage of what we were able, able to absorb from Bernie? I know that that was something.
About eighty-five percent. Just a rough number. And to be honest with you, I've still got people from Bernie, and I knew this would happen, it happens on any kind of, uh, contract, is when you come in and the incumbent goes away. They managed to keep a few drivers for their own purposes, but eventually, those drivers will come back into the fold and, and continue to service this city, and that's what's happening.
The reality we face is that the two largest districts in the county both, both adopted new companies.
Yes, ma'am.
And we're both actively recruiting. So in a time that you're already looking at a driver shortage, the two of you are now pitted against each other, so, you know, that's, these have all been going through our heads. It's just, there's no quick solution.
Okay.
Okay.
So we have a small intimate group, I'm gonna allow Larry Passault to ask a question.
Thank you. So when you presented in front of the board to be awarded the contract, you specifically said you had a SWAT team of like fifty drivers to put out these players. Now, I understand the labor shortage all over the place, I get all that, but one of the big selling points that happened here in Rome was you specifically stated, hey, this won't happen here because I have this. What happened?
I mean, everybody went back to school. So with this shortage being so great approximation, I mean, I could give you examples all over the US. Is everybody went back to school? Normally, I've got my Syracuse location, I've got a couple of other locations that are plus, and I have brought drivers in, or we'd be four more short.
But that is a fair, but it's a very, very fair question.
I watched presentations, so I know the answer, and I'm asking a very straightforward.
Yeah, yeah, those, what happens? Those fifteen, those, we, we did, we can pull from all across the state. That example I gave you before about summer, that has hit every other location in the state as well. So the fifty that we would normally pull from are now in places struggling just to get, you know, the Buffalo's or Rochester's or Syracuse's.
And I, I get it, but in fairness, we only care about Rome, right? So I'm not, you know, no offense, but Syracuse is, you know.
Yeah, I get it, and that's why I brought four here, and that's Syracuse, because I, I care about the startup here. Very fair, I mean, but yes, that's normally the model we use, and we can move stuff around, and we are still using the model, and the problem is the number strength, so much that fifty is dissipated a little bit.
So I own a pretty sizable business locally, I know how we recruit, we're doing all kinds of incentives, so maybe you could help us out, maybe tell the board, I'm assuming they'd like to know, what kind of incentives, or what are you doing to think outside the box to bring drivers here versus Durham or somebody else?
Well, so I am offering a sizable sign-on bonus, offered a sizable incumbent bonus for the Bernie drivers to bring over a good incumbent of those. We are, we have a central New York recruiter that all she does is actively recruit. We did the Canal Fest, put up a booth there, we've got yard signs, we've got banners, we've got video ads, we've got television ads, and people on the ground. So, I mean, we're actively pushing. It's, uh, and, and maybe, I don't know about how, how your business operates.
It's open and open, yeah, I mean, I, you know, open to other ideas, where everything we can think of and our teams can think of, we can throw up a wall that we're open.
And, and, but generally, the way it goes, most places want out about their teams, qualifications, so, you know, we're getting applications, it's just we're trying to get to those individuals that are qualified to be the bus drivers that you want to put on the road with the kids. We, we also, we also have seen, and across, I'm gonna say, all, all New York, we have seen a bit of an uptick in the last few weeks as some of the unemployment regulations have changed.
So just for a layman, right, if I walked in today having never driven anything other than my mom van, tell me what that process would look like? So the public understands from the day I walked in and handed you my resume to the day I could be handed a set of keys.
I, I'd like to say, well, I say it's easy, but I mean, it's driving to school bus. So the day you walk in, we do the interview, send you out for drug tests and for DOT physicals and all that good stuff. Also, if you have a permit in hand, if not, then we teach you.
Yeah, yeah.
If not, then we teach you how to get, we teach you how to get the permit.
Which is part of the process they're improving.
Yes.
The state, okay?
So once you come back with the CDLP, then the fun begins, you go on payroll that day, and then we start training you. We go through the processes of free trips, we go through the processes of child management, go through the processes of the daily driving of the vehicles, what you can turn in, what you can't turn in. And it's about a two-and-a-half to three-week process. But again, paid, because I don't want to leave anybody stranded for two-and-a-half to three weeks without any income source. And, and if there's a period of time between when you've got your CDL road test scheduled, and you're, you're still sitting here, I'm gonna let you work as a monitor so I can keep paying you through that entire process. And then you get some experience as a monitor as well, and know what the monitors go through on your, on your buses. So sometimes you can take it to four weeks.
The first part of the mom, like, that part to get to the permit part, though.
Yeah.
And, you know, that, that requires a lot of follow-up on our part, we can try to help everybody through that, that sometimes takes weeks. And then when Mike said two-and-a-half weeks, that, that, that also optimistically assumes your DMV appointments can line up.
And I know at one point, it was taking us three to four weeks to get that.
Yeah, when I was calling up for appointments and not, not being able to.
You want to go take that test, it was taking three to four weeks to get that appointment as well.
Okay.
It may have gotten a little better, but I know at some point it was.
So in the end, driving a mom van, going to a school bus, once you get past the size of the bus, still driving.
Right. So that being said, you did bring up monitors, can you also, I know that that's kind of a concern for parents of the availability of monitors and their ability to assist both with where our kids are and helping drivers find their way.
So I'm a little heavy on monitors, of all things.
Okay, so you're in a good position with that.
I'm trying to talk them into becoming drivers and offering them bonuses, and I've got some going, now I can barely, yeah, so, no.
Okay, that's good, that's a good thing.
So.
We'll take a plus in account.
Yeah, I'm good with that, too.
Okay.
Any, any more recruiting, staffing questions before I move on to the next subject?
I'm just curious, are most of your drivers part-time, and if so, do you pay benefits or sick in UTO as an incentive?
Okay, so sick time, New York State has got the, the New York State sick time, so that's, uh, what, I don't know exactly, it's up to like seven days a year or something to that extent.
We're covered. Covered by New York State.
Yeah, so that is, that is built into our, our cost models. Now, as far as benefits go, they can get off insurance through. As far as part-time goes?
If they're part-time.
They can, they can also get a lot of hours, so, uh, most of my drivers work anywhere from, from about twenty-eight to forty hours, depending on what they want. As many hours available as per.
So when you offer that, I'd be saying they're part-time in general, but.
Yes, ma'am.
In a given week, they can get a lot of hours to say that they can afford to buy their insurance, or, I'm not sure.
The insurance on, on, on our part, is that what you're saying?
What the company offers.
No, it's relatively, it's, well, no, and we have a benefit package, and it is not your fifty-hour-a-week full-time benefit package that you would have for being a fifty hours a week in the school system. It's a benefit package.
When you said, I was just wondering about possibly some reason why.
No, I don't think so. I don't think I do.
We're ready for the next topic.
I just wanted to say that we, right now, we have sixty-four foot fours, so we, eight drivers of ours, we need them to cover fifty-six. It's important to know that Staley had probably eleven buses because of that squad, so we have to remember, too, that that plays a big part in the shortage.
Kids that can't walk.
Walking kids, where we put the other kids.
Okay.
Well, how many were surfaced by Staley, claimed to be surfaced by?
You want to know how many kids were involved in this?
No, how many buses were you talking?
When we started with Staley, we had twelve bus routes down there that covered five hundred and two kids. And we had over a hundred and twenty kids that were walking students.
Okay.
Then naturally, when they were distributed amongst the various buildings around the district, they actually timed the mileage was kind of against me a little bit, and naturally, we had a count.
Okay.
And additional bus drops to cover those time ranges.
Thank you.
Can I slip in a question? So is there a reason that in the summertime, we didn't see, so in August, end of August, especially, we'd see a lot of dry runs? You know, to get ready for September, for when we had Bernie. In my neighborhood, I didn't really ever see any. Is it because there were no drivers, or what? There were no.
For summer?
No, like getting, getting basically dry runs, getting ready for, for the drivers to learn the addresses and things like that, like.
Every driver did do it, but I don't know.
Because it, I feel like it, on the first day, it was such a disaster that, and it's definitely gotten better, you guys have done great, it's like not in the way now. But I just, I think about how often they were coming through my neighborhood, and I didn't see really any, so I, I'm not sure why that happened.
I think it's a confidence level of the drivers, if drivers don't get it, when they go through the dry runs, we say go do it again. And if they don't get it, after that, we say go do it again. These drivers are extremely professional drivers that you have here in Rome, and, and most of them, other than the new people that we have, knew where they were going. The routes are very similar to what they were, minor changes, and the people that were on those routes kept those routes.
I mean, I saw drivers, literally kids would be waiting outside, and I saw drivers stopping and asking them, what school are you going to? And they would get on, and they would bring them there. So kudos to the drivers, I mean, they were nothing but amazing.
Oh, our mantra on, on the first week of school, and we, we try our best, is every kid is a school, everything gets home, no matter what. If they're on the side of the road, we pick them up and take them to the school they go to.
I saw that first, yeah, so, for sure.
Well, that'd be a perfect, I think routing's next. It's a segue.
I just had a, I had a quick question, just on, on trial runs, if it does drive, are they done at the same time they would be normally bringing the kids to school? Are they done, doesn't matter?
So my perfect, my perfect idea, and whenever you're not in the middle of a startup, is everybody's in at route time for drive. And then everybody takes off, and I've done it that way, and it works beautifully, especially when you've got a group of people that know exactly what they're doing, it, it works great. But sometimes, you know, not during the summertime, and sometimes, you know, like, I came from Alaska, as I told you guys, when dry runs came, it was dark, so. It was fun, but these guys do know what they're doing, and I'll leave it up to Mark, as he, as he gets more experience in the transportation industry, which way he wants to do that in the future.
I'm just curious.
Yes, it, it works, it works, and it, it's fun having a practice table.
Okay, I think we're ready.
Okay, Rob.
All right, on the route. I'm gonna tell you that Staley kind of challenged us, as Andy alluded to, we had five hundred kids routed for, for Staley, and then Staley shut down, and now we had to reroute six hundred and seventy-some-odd kids, which, which added some, some time. We were, and, and Mr. Thompson confessed, we were that close to being complete once Staley got shut down. And we had to start over on, on that school and start building routes again. So it, it was a little bit on the stressful side for the city and for her student, trying to make sure that, that things were working.
And, and I think, very transparent, I think, you know, I always used to use the, the bridge, we put weight on the bridge, some of the boards get loose. I, I think that last weekday of Andy and Brian event, I mean, it was, that, that probably, you know, that caused us to start tripping a little bit, right? That last week, you know, exposed some things where we thought we had stuff, and then it was coming too fast and furious, so, you know, that, that definitely challenged us. Hopefully, we don't do that again, I know these guys were, you know, killing themselves to get it done, but, yeah, that, that just pointed out some things that, you know, we need to be tightened up on, we thought we had, and then that put all the pressure on us. We had some, some, I said, things we could do better, we could rewind the clock, we, we learned a little bit that week, that, of course, we had.
So short-term, short-term, in order to minimize the number of hands in the pot, Peter and, and Rob and I spoke, and, and we're, we're gonna keep our hands out of the pot until October. Because we don't want more than one person making changes, messing up somebody else's changes. And then long-term, we've got a transition plan in place for after October third, to where first planning solutions are to work with Andy and Brian, to, to go over the routes, to kind of learn the city, to kind of learn the nuances of the schools, the routing, and so on and so forth. So that they're not taking over blind, and then coming in and going, here's your routes. And they're going, no, that's not the way that goes.
So, and this is a good, this, I, I think, wasn't the right decision. I remember back in, in June, you know, we, we do have this great team that can do routing optimization, if you're running, which is routing it, and so, and we said, hey, this, this time, middle of the summer, COVID wasn't the time to take the group off something and try to build a better mousetrap, let's get up and running. I think we were close, then the Staley one probably exposed some things that we were tripping over, and now I think when the dust settles, that, that team is ready to jump in, and then we can, you know, we're getting some optimization stuff, but probably wait till we, you know, everybody stabilizes a little bit.
That was a huge question process of work, because that was one of the biggest selling points. Our goal is not for kids to be on the bus for extreme amounts of time. Can you speak to the, I, I'll relate it to an accounting principle, why are we doing first on, last off instead of first on, first off? Because we're having kids who are essentially putting in a longer day than I do at work, from the time they get on to the time they get off. And, and we're, we have a lot of concerns, and I would say that's probably been one of our primary complaints, more than the struggles, most people were amenable to growing pains the first week. Let's face it, we have not had a hundred percent of our kids being bused since March of 2020. When we came back last spring, a lot of kids opted to stay remote, so I think people felt that coming. But to see the change in routes, when our prior carrier had a personal commitment to the district of fifty-five minutes or less one-way, really, really upset a lot of parents. So that optimization, for me, helped me to say, yes, the first student.
And, and Ms. Davis, we agree a hundred percent. And, and when we get up to our, our staffing levels.
Okay.
That, that will alleviate, so, and we're, I mean, we're battling every day, just like you guys are in school and in your jobs, we're, we're, we're out there fighting a good fight right now. And, and the people that show up to work are helping us make that happen, but we are, again, still short, and, and we do make that same commitment, the kids shouldn't be on the bus that long.
Although, Mike, I, one thing I, you know, and I don't know, I'm gonna phone a friend. I think the first time last off, is that, can we take that? Obviously, I'm not, that, that sounds like a very identifiable topic that can be, you know, we have to wait for routing optimization later to do that.
Yeah, it's just doing that after, you know, if I get on at five fifty-four.
Andy's saying.
I can answer a couple of these questions, sometimes it's not practical.
I can answer a couple of these questions. Sometimes it's not practical, first time, first off. I'm using an example, generally go from the furthest point and work our way toward school, okay? That means person closest to the school has the shortest ride time. But when we leave the school, and I'll give you an example, we pick up Westernville first before we head to Stone School. Now, at the end of the day, we pick up Stone School, we go back to Westernville. Do I drive by that kid's house or do I drop that kid off?
Well, I think that, I mean, I, I had a parent ask me this at church on Monday. And said, my child goes to Ridge, we live five minutes from Ridge, but my child gets on the bus first, goes all the way around the lake. And then gets to school, um, but then conversely, that child goes all the way back around the lake and is the last one dropped off. So, there's gotta be a way to shorten either the, I understand in the morning, because you're trying to get them all to school, go to the furthest point and work in. But it's not any less fair for one child to have a longer ride in the morning and the opposite child to have a longer ride in the afternoon. To balance it out versus the same kid getting on at five fifty-five and getting home at four o'clock. That's just not, it's not healthy for our kids. And it's super stressful for our parents.
And, and, and as I said, once we get where we're, we're fully staffed, then we'll have more buses available to be able to.
But without a doubt, without a doubt, less kids on a bus would be a huge help and we understand that. But we'll go with what you can work with.
Yeah, and, and so, yeah, right now, I mean, that is a, a great question and I know my kids have a long bus ride in, in their school district. And, and it's the same thing. I mean, the, you know, I've been down and talked to the barn, they're like, hey man, we're, we're fourteen drivers down on, on fifty routes.
Right.
Uh, so, I mean, we're, we're doing really, really good here in Rome compared to some of the other districts out there. Uh, being only about six short from, from covering all of our routes.
Rattlers are all remote still, right?
Uh, not all remote, but, but that being said, I was gonna, you know, that doesn't.
Yeah.
Not relevant to the wrong team right now, so.
No, but we don't wanna be hybrid and we don't wanna be closed, so.
Yes.
That's.
But, but I think there's still something we can work on. I don't want to sign you an idea.
Yeah, there's something we can work on.
So, can I ask a question, Mike? Uh, so fully staff refers both to people and buses, or?
Got plenty of buses.
Oh, okay.
There are three hundred buses in Rome right now. Uh, so yeah, that goes to my next segue, which, please, we've got about ninety percent of Rome's ordered fleet. Uh, in Rome. And now, they're not ready to go on the road yet. I still have to get the technology and equipment out. Uh, which, that is currently in the process. Uh, the twenty-seventh, we start doing camera installs. Uh, they've already started doing radio installs. Uh, we go to tablet installs at the beginning of next month. Uh, so, I mean, we are on track, on track to, to the November timeframe that I told you guys, right at the beginning of November. Those buses are gonna be set. So DOT, we'll, we'll start working DOT out of Syracuse. We've got a couple of other places that will be sending them for DOT. Uh, until such time as, as, uh, we're ready to start building them in-house.
DOT means?
Department of Transportation inspections.
You forget the easy stuff when you're on information.
You do. Yes.
Real quick, my daughter's on the bus for an hour and a half now, uh, currently. So what, what's gonna be the acceptable timeframe when you're staffed and all of this?
Less than an hour.
We're gonna go for less than an hour?
That's what we always start, it's okay.
Question, sir, in the interim of when you're able to convert to that. Um, some concerns that we've heard are, so the students, like this daughter is on a bus for an hour and a half and we're still experiencing. Seventy-five to eighty-three weather, there's no air conditioning. And parents are saying that the driver not permitting any of the windows to be open, then the student was also told she couldn't drink water. So what are we doing to address some of the conditions they're gonna be in for that prolonged period of time until you're able to?
Uh, now, I will say that very large portion of the buses don't have air conditioning.
But not all.
Yeah, and I, I can't answer, I can't, unfortunately, I'm gonna deflect, or maintenance guy is not here. But yes, there's a large portion of fleet doesn't have air conditioning, not all. The windows down, we'll look into that portion of it.
And not allowed to drink water.
Now, we do have rules of no eating and drinking on the school bus, because it creates a choking hazard, which would. Give a driver.
Might that be something you might allow when the kids are on this bus for up to an hour and a half in hot conditions?
That would be something on top of the.
Yeah, we, we don't, I mean, we're whispering, I don't, the window one, we're gonna follow up on that.
So, I mean, we're taking notes from your questions, so, yeah.
Yeah, I, I actually thought the window window was one of the COVID conditions, that fresh air was.
So I know all the buses have air conditioning, uh, and, and, uh. Those are open. I, I, I drive around, whenever I come down from Partridge and, and I look, because I wanna see what my drivers are doing, I wanna see what. What Mark's team is, is, uh, accomplishing. I, I've seen, uh, drivers when they have kids on the, on the vehicle with their, their face coverings on. I've seen vents open, I've seen windows open. Now, I, I don't know, that may be a specific, and without specifics, I.
Two different parents, uh, and one was middle school and one was elementary that shared that.
Well, well.
Yeah, I was gonna say, let's make it simple. We'll, we'll tackle that tomorrow and then we'll talk.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Um. And I, just for information, is there any consideration given to children who live on major highways? In the sense that, are they picked up? Like, if, like, my neighborhood, it's a neighborhood. My daughter has to cross the street to get on the bus. A, she's fourteen, and B, it's this tiny street, it's a neighborhood. But they're children that live on major highways in Rome. Is there any consideration in the sense that the bus would come on the side of the road and pick them up?
That is optimal. Uh, and, and that is how we always try to route. And if there's not a possibility and they are, uh, gonna have to make a, a, an off-door-side pickup. And that bus usually has a monitor that stops and gets out and stops traffic for the kids. Uh, now, I don't know how many, uh, I don't, I've seen a couple, not major highway, but I've seen a couple of off-door-side pickups in the monitors. Are always doing the right thing and I don't know how many of those are there in the district. Uh, I'm, I'm not that deep in the weeds on that, so.
I do have to say another complaint we have seen, Elena's, um, question reminded me is, um. Mind you, I get we had the same carrier for forty-plus years, but complaints of, um, alleys or dead ends where your drivers are refusing to go. Where children were always picked up and Rome does have a commitment, Mr. Blake, uh, advised us when we spoke last week. Of driveway pickup that we don't do bus stops. And I know there were some parents who had said, well, first student doesn't do that. And I'm like, hang on, we were told that didn't, by our superintendent, that didn't change, but since you're here, I'd like to ask you, because I know that was a safety consideration under this.
It is a safety consideration when you talk about alleys or places that buses can go in, but can't get out without backing.
Uh, I guess parents' concern is the prior, previously their child was picked up there and now they're not. So how do they? I'm skipping ahead, but the worst complaint, I think all nine of us would agree, has been, no one can talk to you. And I understand that when you're getting four or five or six hundred phone calls, that's a lot, but that was also one of the things that we were really clear on asking you guys. And I understand that with this daily change, everybody wasn't loaded into the app, but we had no app. And as a huge company, you had no bodies to answer the phone. And parents, and, and you sent that great letter, Brian, but even your letter had no phone numbers on it. And so, all these things, our parents wanna know that if they physically cannot find their child or they have a concern. That at some point, someone is going to get back to them. And if you know what, as far as board members saying, I will come and volunteer to answer the phone if that's what you need to do.
To answer your question, that, that did, uh, that did get to me.
Okay.
That we're having issues. Mark was telling me he was overwhelmed with phone calls, because everybody's out, everybody's out on the road, making sure everybody's getting to school and back. So I am gonna hire, and, and I've already approved it, and we've already started the process, I'm gonna hire some tents. Uh, for at least thirty days. We'll see how it goes after that, uh, to answer phones here alone. So, now, as far as accessibility, uh. If, if you can't get me on the phone, as a matter of fact, I, I, I talked with a parent the other day and helped him, uh, with an issue he had. He came in and said, hey, can you help me out? Come down. I mean, we'll, we'll see you at the barn and, and try and address your problem there. So.
I think, well, we'll, we'll take two and make sure this, that, you know, times can't happen fast enough, I know. We had somebody supposed to giving us. Yes, Robin was there, but that can't happen fast enough. We, we get that, that's a valid complaint, again, not through lack of effort, but through, we probably got a little overwhelmed.
We did.
We've gotta fix that, and, and if it needs to be four tents, it'll be four.
Well, and you can't fix a problem for an individual child if you aren't aware of it, and they can't tell you about the problem if they can't get through here or there. And same thing, Rob and Andy are each one person. Rob has a lot more on his hands than just busing. I mean, you know, so we understand that, and I get that. For me as a parent, if I didn't know where my child was or how to find out, like, that's terrifying, so.
I've got eight kids, I, I know.
No, I, I get it.
No.
I get it. So, like, I do wanna, I do wanna go back to the original point, though. Uh, meaning, I, I think if there are any individual concerns like that. Uh, uh, our take is, is definitely not gonna be trying to veer from anything that makes sense that was done prior. And that's something we can work on with, with the district team. I, I think what'll be interesting is if we float something that, you know, i- if it was being done prior. But it does look like we're probably making a big safety trade-off, that's probably one we need to, you know, muddle through the district and say, what, what, what do you want? Going down that road, you know, there, there's a trade-off there and I don't know all the specifics.
Well, and in this situation, it was a small child and, and they have to, the person, the one specific complaint, the, the person does daycare. They have several kids in the house, so they can't go stand outside. Perhaps just the monitor going to that house. You know, if there's a monitor on that bus and the monitor meeting the child, you know, with waving something for the child to come out, might be a solution. But there has to be a better way when you're dealing, like Elena said, her daughter's fourteen and on a quiet street. That's far different than, you know, the five-year-old that someone's not right there to hold their hand.
Andy, do you know who, who we're talking about? Okay, so.
And I apologize, I didn't take down the name, because, like everyone we've been inundated with.
We'll, we'll look and, so, and get names for me, because the more specific, uh, the better I can handle a problem. If I know who I'm dealing with.
This goes with our response to making sure, you know, phone calls are flown more freely, because then we might have that directly and frankly. Appreciate it. Uh, none of you should have to be the communication.
No, that's our job.
For that stuff.
That's our job. The difficulty we all have as a board, not just on this issue, is you have Facebook warriors who wanna comment, but then they don't wanna reach. But then when you're conversely seeing the comments of, well, we can't reach anybody anyway, that feels like their only platform.
Sure, sure.
So.
All right, well. And he'll call me.
Thank you.
And, 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 and anytime Rob sends us something directly, it's, it's much easier, because he has specifics.
Yeah, right.
Uh, if, if I have specifics, then I can fix it. If I don't, then I'm taking a shot in the dark.
I agree.
Mr. Blake has his hand up.
Yeah, he's.
I'm good. Can you hear me or am I a robot?
I can hear you.
We're good, all right. These weren't working earlier. I just wanted to make a comment about the, um, door-to-door pickup. One thing to note, first student buses are significantly larger than the Bernie buses, so they might not be able to get down all of the alleyways that we used to be able to get down. So some of that's gonna be trial and error, as we find some places that the buses don't fit, where they may have used to fit, uh, previously this year. Just wanna make sure that folks are aware that the new fleet, uh, the buses are larger than what we are used to experiencing. So that, that could be an issue with some of those door-to-door pickups.
I, I also just wanna say, I just noticed as Peter did that, that it said that there were three hands raised. If you're watching the meeting virtually, please email us at asktheboe@rome-cs.org. Um, copy Mr. Blake, P. Blake, or copy Mr. Maza, R. Maza. We don't have a format anymore to answer your questions virtually. I don't even have my Chrome up here tonight, so we don't have anybody moderating the chat or any of that. But if you do have specific issues, we now have the resource that we know where to send those, so please email us so that we can get you to the right place.
And I, I, if it's, if it's first student question, any of the three of us will answer your questions.
And, and we, we do need to do a better job of publicizing that, the phone number and email.
Yeah, they're on the list.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, go ahead, Larry.
So I guess my only question is, in today's technology, if you're short folks to answer the phone in Rome, why wouldn't you phone that phone to Waterpound or Hughes? Indian River, Rochester, Buffalo. I mean, that's how we do it, you know what I mean, it's obviously.
I, I get what you're saying. Uh, they're as busy as, as everybody else is, and, and, and all their staff is out on the road as well. Uh, now, that's why I'm hiring and I'll let you go ahead.
Well, some of the concerns that they may not be able to answer, maybe like, you know.
Location.
You know, to your point, one of the biggest concerns Rome had was nobody in the rural organization was driving, nobody was there to answer the phone. So I think that, you know, as a citizen and former board member, I would say, you know, you guys need to step up and do what you need to do to, to make this happen.
And that's why I'm hiring people for it, so.
Yes, sir.
I agree.
Just a quick question on the same topic.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, so I had the same issue from the perspective of, you know, all chatter and trying to get some clear answers and report it as soon as possible. Like the top two that know, you know, there's a Rome location, and so you call the phone number for that. I maybe got a first, first of all, it's answered by a computer that gives you an option of dialing zero for the operator or using a. You, you know, alphabetical. When I tried entering your name and the other names listed on the website, it said it didn't recognize any of them. I thought, well, somebody you introduced was on the list. There's five people that are listed on the district website. I tried dialing all, I tried entering all five names and it said none of them were in that system. When I dialed zero, it took three tries to get an answer, and when I got choose, you know, whatever. It said you've reached first group FS fourteen thousand four hundred and ten. I just wonder if that is something you're gonna change, because I would imagine that people that are local and were promised a local company.
Yes, ma'am.
Are you aware that that was what they're doing when they got that?
I'm aware that the system is. And that they're still working on it, so.
I, I actually made a contact, we're gonna switch all in, so you're gonna, you'll hear a live voice up there. And that live voice will go down and say, hit extension one oh one, go location manager.
So it'll list what to do for each person, okay? And, but as far as dialing zero for operator and reaching Cincinnati, quite frankly, is what it seems like.
It's not gonna say that. You'll pick it up and you'll, you'll have a live voice.
Okay. But it identifies as first group, not first student, so.
I'm sorry.
You, you wonder, did I call the right number? So you're saying all that is gonna be correct.
And when you hear that live voice, it'll be, hey, you've reached your own first student location.
So that's correct, that it was like this last year, but it's going to be corrected very soon.
Yeah, it'll be corrected. I will, uh, please note that. I did not want to, uh.
And, uh.
I don't.
I know last year, Bernie bus used to, um, on some roads at least, when they're picking up kids, they, they wanna cross the road. Some cars could pass either way. I don't know, is that something you guys do too?
You mean angle into the, oh, no, that's illegal.
It's a great idea, but it's, it's not something we can do.
I thought it was a great idea. We're already, we're already, we're already controlling traffic with our rats and they are a legal form of stop. Uh, people, people are gonna ignore them and that's why we, I believe we got stoparant cameras for this location as well. So we'll be able to identify those individuals who don't believe in school bus red lights and then tell them why they should.
We'll open dialogue with Rob, but we are directed to always have not to have those processes.
On gift road, I remember seeing it a lot.
And, and we have fixed some, that they're routing people, we're really familiar with, when they saw maybe a dead end, they, they made a stop. We've been steward three of the ones that came to our time immediately on the phone, some of our now with the roll, should be.
Gladly, so, so, I'm old, I had to.
When the app is up and running, like, this should alleviate a lot of this, correct?
Man, you're stealing my thunder.
Okay, okay.
Well, he would have, but we kept interacting.
I was actually getting ready to move into that.
Okay.
So. All right, so we, yeah, matter of fact, we easily segue into service execution and communication. That's over with. I'm hiring people to take care of that, so, and then the next one was a parent tracking. So, right now, as it stands, uh, the seventh, you guys advertised that the app was available and live. You guys said, Peter, do you have the numbers I sent you in the emails, like a hundred and seventy-four? Parents that are actually. Parents that are actually tracking the app right now. Uh the problem is, is we've got, and and this won't take me long to fix it, so I'm asking you to be patient with me. Right now, I have visibility to my AM route, so my PM routes, uh due to some some construction. Uh inside uh transponder have got to be packaged with the uh, you know, like their tiers. Uh and then they have to be kicked back down and we're working with our routing team right now, so. I I asked my team, okay, we'll get all the information in that you're asking for assignment tasks. Then they'll be able to see the AMs and they said yes, so tomorrow, you guys should be able to see the AM routes. Now, as far as the accuracy goes, and I I I'm not a big component of turning something on until it's a hundred percent, but I'm. I'm going to see how it works uh tomorrow, if it's if it's up and by. Uh if it's just. If it's not as accurate as I want it to be, I'm going to shut it off and get everything a hundred percent accurate, and then by the end of next week, I should have everything. One hundred percent, hopefully sooner than that, and I'm hoping that this week we'll have it up and running. And yes, to answer your question, that will alleviate ninety-nine percent of the phone calls that are coming.
So. You, we released it as a district now with the goal of getting parents signed up.
The seventh, yes, ma'am.
Okay, because that, there was not a positive comment on that post. So I think we could have done a better job as a district of processing that post by saying. We are looking for you to sign up, routes are still being added, like that, that's, that's something communication side here, so. I I didn't even know how to answer that and I knew you were coming here tonight, so.
And 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 I I'm just going to apologize to you guys, I I think I probably could have done a better job with my team to help you. Uh transition into something like that. But to be honest, I mean. I think of a lot of things and and that one's done, hey, whenever it needs my attention, I I go to it. Uh and and it has been needing my attention, so we're we're getting things fixed and and uh. Getting them up and running.
But that that is, your point is is the right point, that the balance is. You know, you turn it on and we still have routes in flux, now you're just showing some, you know, that that's going to aggravate me as a parent more than.
So. And and I'd like the feedback tomorrow, if parents are able to see there. Okay, uh email or or something, I I'd like some feedback from somebody that says, yeah, it's working perfectly for me. Or if any of you board members have kids in school, track, track your child and see if you can see the AM portion of it, so. Uh with that being said, like I said, I should have it fixed and I want to give myself a two week window. Because you never know what's happening whenever you get the data. Uh the house could come down on it, uh and and you're going, oh my gosh, I got so much stuff to fix in here, it's ridiculous. Or it could go smooth and everything's packaged, and then you guys have a a an app up that's accurate and and reliable by.
I have a question and I'm sorry, but so kind of goes back to rounding a little bit. I know how stressful it's been at teachers especially, going back to school anyway. Everybody's getting back into a routine, getting back and, you know, the kids and and just getting to know the students, right? Our Bellamy school is feeding so, has fed so much daily that they're exhausted, they're sobered out the staff. We're having kids getting picked up. I'm at five, so I'm at six. Now, with that being said, I understand all of these things, but their contract isn't until five and it is not until six. But they're required to stay until the last student leaves. So what is going to happen? Are we going to end up having to come out of? Pay for them to stay because they're working overtime? Or what is going to happen? How fast can we fix this to get those Bellamy families and get the teachers? Home with their family, I think there's nearly even, you know, they have their own families and they're already exhausted. So we have got to figure out a way to get them, to get that school into control and get them. Get those kids home so those teachers can get home to their families.
Yes, ma'am, and and I I agree with you a hundred percent.
Thank you, thank you, it's just, it makes me. A little bit frustrated knowing as a mom and working in, you know, an educational. I get frustrated when I get leave at two, when it's past two forty, I get really annoyed, those teachers are there until. The mon- not just the teachers, the the TAs, I mean, everybody's there. They have, you know, they have stuff, they have their own kids to get ready as well, not to mention doing things for the next day. We've got to get, especially the babies too, we got to get the babies home, but we got to take care of our teachers.
I agree. And and it will, it will fix.
Thank you.
I know, and and I I understand, a hundred percent I do, I understand your frustration, like I said, as a parent myself, like, you know. It it is, it's frustrating and I do a hundred percent sympathize with you on that, I I believe in what you said. And it will smooth, uh just like I had been telling my team here in Rome, you know, the first week. They they got punched in the eye a few times and I was like, you know, you guys need to go home, put some ice on your eye and come back and fight fight tomorrow. This is another, as we add drivers, we are adding drivers, as we add drivers, it will start to. Alleviate some of the stress that you guys are feeling at these schools. So somebody stole my thunder on wheat and we we jumped, we jumped ahead on wheat.
We have, we have five out of six now.
Yeah. I'm done. Uh so we're we're we're, we do have our facilities. Uh we're in the process of working our maintenance facility up, uh we're operating out of two lots right now. Uh Staley flooded has become a great odd for a first student. Uh so we are operating out of the the Scotty's Hot Dog Lot, which is now for a student and out of the Staley Lot. Right now, operations are, they're smoothing daily. Uh and and once they get the logistics of the back and forth out, then I think it'll smooth even more and it'll help alleviate some of that time. Uh that you guys are feeling over there. So I I think we're good with uh with our facilities and with uh everything that's going on, so.
There's two two things that I guess, and and one is, you might mention this earlier, and uh, you know, we're also, we're going. We'll be going through this process for the next sixty days of having a whole lot of buses here, right, as we kind of. Yeah. Transfuse the old fleet to new fleet, so he's going to have, but that'll settle down, right, you know, best port to December and you have the, you know. Eighty buses, so right now, we have a lot of fleet and that's kind of why I'm thankful for Staley or will go us through this transition period is we're. Bringing the new fleet up and then uh. Um, you know, the other other thing I would, I would add and admittedly trying to add humor, not deflecting our responsibility on this, but I was told. Uh by the whole first student group that uh that was the only time we've ever run an operation of bowling.
Yes.
Appreciate the the work of district, you know, you know, quick turnaround in the summer and that was. Uh that was a little little odd, but I think we're in good shape, there's work being done right now, I mean, Mark's over there and there's Jack's Dodge and contractors. But uh but that's all, everything's moving forward.
And it was interesting, as we were in a meeting and I hear the CEO of the company go. Brian, what what, what are all those bottles behind, is that alcohol?
Choose your background well.
Real quick, like, so I was talking about technology and I I brought up and I brought a little sample, so Rome is showing up. Uh in my data, uh the major data will come when we start seeing school on time performance and I can share that with the board whenever I. I start receiving that data when the route, because it's it's as important for me to get the routes in. To my focus uh program as it is to you guys to see them. Because I can start compiling data on how our drivers are doing with on time performance, how they're doing with flight compliance, which I'll explain to you guys at some other point. Uh how they're doing with all of the other metrics that are important to us as a school district, to make sure that the kids are to school and home. Uh but we are starting to see that. Well, yeah, so I mean, some of the stuff that they that we do see is like free trip compliance, uh. And we see how long drivers do their free trip, uh I I don't want to see a driver do anything less than seven minutes, eight minutes. If they're not spending at least that, and I don't bribe the drivers for doing eight, nine minutes sometimes. Uh it's just not, not what I, I expect somebody to drive with me for, making sure my bus is safe. Uh so that that's the kind of data you guys will see, speeding, hard braking, rapid acceleration. Uh so on and so forth, so some of that I'm already seeing because we have GPS units on the buses. But the other stuff like on time performance also happening for you guys for the next couple of weeks, and I will. Send uh Rob and and Peter update on how we're doing. Uh and and they can share with the board.
And I have a question for Andy actually. Something Peter brought up about the buses are bigger than, the first one must have been bigger than Bernie. Is that a pop, is that a, I know there's a lot of reasons, but could that be one of the reasons why the routes are longer now because you put more kids in a bus?
Yes, when we started out, our original goal was to have our routes done by August twenty. That's, that's always been an unwritten rule, it's having put together by that date, start looking at it. When we started looking at less drivers available, we started looking at the routes themselves. How can we meet the number of drivers we have based on the number of routes that we have? So yes, we put more kids on the route, yes, we extended some of the drive times a little bit, we put more kids on the route. Because we didn't have the drivers, so it was a, it was a, the best bad decision, I guess we can make at this point.
I got, I got it.
That brought a a a brief discussion that we had had about um staggered timing, probably more for the secondary than the elementary, but is that? Have we repeated that conversation at all? Or or is that a consideration we might, I mean, we we Anna and I were talking about it, when we went to school, you know, the buses picked up seven through twelve together. And RFA started at seven ten and Staley and Stowe started, I think, at seven thirty-five. So you stopped at RFA first and dropped off kids and then went to your successive junior high, so. Um but we all lived, you know, back when you did go to a bus stop, everybody in the neighborhood was a one bus stop. Um so I understand that things have changed, but that is, again, it's something that we could do. Well, I guess if 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 we were in a crisis and i- is our crunch more with elementary than secondary, is and is that something that down the road? If we don't solve the driver crisis that we might have to consider.
Right now, we're looking at elementary bell times at this point to see if there's anything we can do naturally and try to have. Uh the right number of buses at the right place and because of the length of the the routes themselves, I mean, you've got fifty minutes between. Uh pickup and drop off, doesn't leave you a lot of time to get to the next school, you have to have that time, so.
So it's more finishing the secondary route to get to the elementary, so it might be like, oh, we start at nine, we should start at nine fifteen.
RFA, we're discussing at two o'clock, by the time the buses roll out, it's two ten. Can we get to the next school by two forty-five and then bump the next school to like three thirty or something like that, we're looking at several different options, but. Some of the special needs programs that are are really. Around the city and and in a good distance, so eventually time and mileage again, the ride time for everybody. And being able to double trip that bus, next problem is if bus one has a problem. All of a sudden, now you got a problem with route two, bus number three.
Right, right. Well, that was my next note, was we haven't talked about extracurriculars, after school programs or field trips. And I know that one of the big complaints we did have was a problem with a couple of the sporting activities, kids not getting shuttles, kids not getting. And I think that what we weren't aware of, Rob, was that we're utilizing, you know, I was like, wait a minute, but we have dis- district buses if we run it, but we don't. We're utilizing those right now as well. Okay, so that, that answered, I mean, that answered that question for me, but. Um and then my last question was related to the tracking app, do you have any capability for messaging if there is a breakdown? Um if there is a snow emergency, anything you can.
Yes.
It can, it'll shoot something out to me in my phone as well, like.
Now, that has to be manually. Manipulated by district, so let's say bus seven has an issue. Then somebody from a district or a first student has to get on the app and type in, bus seven delayed. Due to yada, 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 we'll be there at such, yes, you can push messages.
Okay.
But it has to be physically manipulated.
It's not like, it's not, it it's not full, well, I guess ways that you can do this, Daniel, yeah, it doesn't automatically.
No, 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 but is that a capability, like?
Yes.
If we want, if we only have a hundred and seventy-four parents set up and we're transporting four thousand kids. We need to encourage more parents to use, I mean, yes, we want you to get it working properly, but it only also works properly if everybody downloads it. And subscribes and gets their child, so. You know, I I know the message did say that, it uses your student's ID number, which is found on their report card or your school can provide to you. You want to be able to subscribe, but we are also want to teach them the value of what it can do for them. Um so that was something else that, yeah. Yes, it is growing pains and and as I have to echo what Anna said, I have heard nothing but. Um please don't blame the drivers because the drivers have been amazing, so.
Thank you.
We appreciate.
And and so many times, so. I I I'm going to go back to going home the other day, I stopped in a Stewart shop uh on the way back to Carthage. Lady was by herself. Making sandwiches for one lady, lady goes, are you the only one here? She goes, yeah, so I'm standing there waiting patiently. There's a line of about thirty people that came in, I don't want to exaggerate, people started griping, I was like, hey, guys, thank her for showing up. You know, she's making the sandwiches, she's working her her rear end, thank her for doing this. And don't gripe at her because she's alone. So thank you guys for that, about the bus, I guess.
And I I think just. Couple, couple things on this, right, I mean. Obviously, not where we want to be right now, right, yeah, I mean, so we we get it and there's a really good feedback, that's really good stuff. We had a bunch coming in tonight, we do need to work on, I think we've got another half dozen or three, so. And we recognize that, so we do appreciate your patience, I think we do have the right leadership team and we got the right partnership here, I think we're getting closer on drivers, I I, you know, I think we're. You can see it a little bit, we we got to close that gap and then there's, because we we got to do different, so we got to get out of this. Startup can't come quick enough and and get into that stability mode, and I think we are headed there, but we recognize that, we appreciate your feedback and and patience and. And um and we appreciate the time.
Well, we thank, we thank you gentlemen, also, uh, you said our question, you didn't like. When we asked the question, you weren't like back cuddling, you were right there, you had answers, you didn't know the answer, you said you tried it out for us. Was a thing you had an answer, which I appreciate, so, thank you.
And people need to know that that's something, we scrutinized this decision, it was not an easy decision, how many times did we beg you? We went to Rob with extra questions, we asked you guys for more information. We met numerous extra time, it was not an easy decision, we wanted to make the right decision for every child, it's not. It within our control that we're still dealing with COVID, that what happened at Staley, that we have a national bus driver crisis, and no, those aren't excuses, but. We need to remember that there are so many factors at play that none of us could have predicted when we. When we looked at all of this in March and April, you know, we were hopeful that we were starting a normal. Year this year, and I don't know that we're ever going to use that word again.
Well, and I maybe one more thing is that it's just, you know, whatever. This board, you know, there's some wiring here, right, Mark and and Brian are meeting every day, right, multiple times and and Rob and Mike and I have met. Peter a little bit, but even for the board, you know, whenever you you, whenever you need us to have, answer questions, provide updates. Whatever you need, you know, I'll I can even, Mike and I can be your prime contacts for that, so we 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 appreciate the time, uh and. Moving forward, you let us know when you need something different from us that maybe you.
Mark, you're going to say something.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank everybody who had the opportunity to come here, you know, for facing me. Let you guys know I am fully committed. And and I know my staff is. Continuous improvement, I like to use that word with my staff every day. We will get better.
I feel like, like. More in your scope, I think, we're not, there's some prefer stuff, you you take us seriously and and sure, it seems like it to me, so I think. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Larry.
Thank you.
Let's take a five minute recess, folks. Let's take a five-minute recess, folks.
Can I plug in a space here, Charlie?
Oh.
I, I'm sorry. Instead of one model, can we please have room city school that's a clinic?
As far as, good now. This week, first week is probably why not?
Oh, right, 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 right.
I know my feet are cold. Uh, what did he ask? Or was it a long lengthy question?
It wasn't about the bus thing. It's about asking the board for me, like, like, when you don't have.
Okay, so why can't, basically, why can't people ask a question?
Why do we need buses? Yeah, somebody's not there.
Yep.
I wish I had that. Find things of certain specific situations because that was what people were frightened about, right? You know, I'm a person, I'm a person. And I will, that just keeps you down on that. You know, what's more important than being caught in a rope of harm?
So, um.
Singing in the book, huh?
Yep, I committed myself, so. I'm going to read it. I thought we'd be out of here like at seven thirty.
A what?
Seven thirty. Yeah, that's not happening. I really, I did. I thought we were gonna be out of here by seven thirty.
I'm glad we're late for tonight, not Thursday, though. Make them, I'll make the beer Thursday.
Well, yes, that is true. Yeah. Well, we still have two other things here too. Don't we? Don't we have an executive session as well? I don't know, it's not as cold as it usually is. Usually it's a lot colder. Well, yes, I do have this sweater on, but, yeah. But normally, I mean, my hands and everything are cold as well. Has anybody talked to Joe? Have you talked to Joe? I know.
Was she sick?
He left one boy.
Yeah, she, yeah. She was sick, okay.
He left a couple of times. But you can have it. I'm not gonna take your pepper.
I ate the one that was over here. I ate one too. That was two. Where'd you find that butterfinger? That was in there?
No, that was from home.
Oh, okay. I'm like, hey, I didn't see that butterfinger in there.
No, it wasn't. It was in my stash at home. I never like to be without chocolate.
Yes, I, I just bought a big bag yesterday. Or Friday, I should say.
Just chocolate.
Yeah, it was there.
Okay, well, we, we'll resume the meeting and our next item is our ESSR funding. So Mr. Blake, would you like to start off by saying anything?
Sure. Good evening, everybody. Uh, just sent the plan uh yesterday with some updates. Uh, plan is a little bit more uh self-sustaining through the four-year process. There actually is some wiggle room each of the four years for additional purchases if necessary. Um, but open for discussion. The, the big things that are uh district-wise that we are looking to try and move forward with would be the uh elementary classroom furniture. Uh, we've been, we've been looking to do that uh for several months now. Uh, we've had a plan going back two years prior to COVID to start phasing that furniture into the general fund. Uh, but we have not been able to do that mostly partly due to COVID and then uh just kind of delaying where things would be financially. The other two items on there are uh positions called student support specialists, one for STRA, one for RFA. Uh, these individuals will work with students uh to in- improve attendance, work with families to help improve attendance, look at chronic absenteeism and figure out which barriers there might be uh preventing a student from coming to school at the middle school and high school level. And then the other piece would be the restorative practices coordinators uh looking to add. Uh, we believe that they should be certified school counselors uh to do that work, but to basically start infusing more restorative practices into the schools um to help kind of uh hop on that bandwagon a little bit better. Those are the three uh key items within the plan that I think uh we're looking to try and move on uh without further delay.
I'm sorry, what? The furniture. Okay, we had spoken to Jeff at the last um people operations meeting, and we had thought that you were gonna move on this student support specialist for this board meeting. Like we had told him that someone.
My understanding is it was gonna be on a Thursday board meeting, not this one. We didn't have any action items on for tonight.
Thursday, yes. So he did do that. Like that one's coming.
Uh, as far as, as long as the, the full board is comfortable with that, I know the, the people operations, well, the people operations committee, I guess, was the full board the other night, wasn't it?
It was eight of us.
Sorry.
Out of nine.
Yeah. So, yeah, we're not used to that. We're used, the committee's saying yes, and then the committee having to speak to the full board. So that is, we can get that on this week. That is not an issue.
Okay. I, I just, it's just, I, I get it. Timing's been everything. We do a lot of other things. We hope that that would start before school started, so. I think we were all on board with that one. Um. I'm also, so the furniture. I don't know at what point we had talked about that, but I think my biggest concern about the furniture is it's that chicken and egg thing. We hired Ross Haber and that was a big part of his presentation. So I think that's a really important purchase to make. I just think are we gonna make sure that what we decide on purchasing aligns with whatever he comes back and recommends? And are we purchasing based on the number of classrooms we have now or the number of students so that whenever we figure out whatever's happening building-wise, that we have enough to distribute that, that the next expansion doesn't say, oh, here's what's stuck in storage and it's the old stuff.
So Ross isn't really a part of this process for the furniture piece. We have a furniture vendor we work with. That's what they specialize in. Our architects actually have interior designers that we work with for this work more so than anything Ross recommend. Uh, I would continue to follow the plan that we've had in place for a couple of years on this. Uh, this has been an ongoing project for us. We just haven't been able to have the funds to do it. We would, and we would always purchase based on student numbers. Um, the nice thing is with less classrooms, you have to purchase less extra furniture. Uh, so there is some savings from what would have been with Staley being open, but you're always gonna purchase based on uh, first of all, the students you have currently enrolled. You have to obviously purchase a little bit extra to make sure that you, you have everybody covered. And then the bigger piece is kindergarten furniture is different than sixth grade furniture, different than second grade furniture. Uh, you, you buy current furniture based on the program, whereas once upon a day you bought furniture that's kind of one size fits all uh kind of goes into all the classrooms you need to make do. It's very different nowadays. That's why we contract with a furniture vendor uh that comes in, does the analysis, tells us, uh works with the teachers, uh what they refer to having in their classroom in terms of usable furniture. And then we order things up that way. It's quite a lengthy process from start to finish.
So Peter, the furniture that we're getting is the stuff that the teacher, Dana reached out to the teachers for, right? It's not just gonna be random stuff that um, we think would be appropriate for a K one, two. It's gonna be stuff that Dana and has worked out with the teachers, right?
Correct. It's not just the one size fits all. There's certain uh things that we're gonna put into kindergarten, first grade, second grade classrooms because that's what we feel the curriculum uh program requires. But part of the furniture process, the furniture audit is conversations with the teachers to see what they desire, what they think will enhance their uh teaching experiences, and we take that into account and we do our best. What we, what we try to stay away from is saying uh teacher A gets X, Y, and Z and teacher B does not. So we want to make sure that every teacher gets something consistent. Uh, so you're not having the finger pointing, wondering why such and such a first grade teacher in one building got X, Y, or Z, and the first grade teacher in another building did not. Uh, but in order to build that consistency, we have to engage the teachers to make sure that we're able to provide them with what they want.
Good. Thank you. I just want to make sure they're involved as po- as involved as possible.
Peter, you said that the architect and a furniture vendor was gonna be.
Raise your hand if you just got to.
Yeah, so Paul, we've engaged with a furniture vendor back to Joy School when that was renovated and then Stroud, they came in, did all the furniture work. And Stroud, the company actually does professional development for teachers to help them understand how to utilize uh more modern furniture in a different way. Uh, they've been on site repeatedly over the years doing audits of our furniture, letting us know what's obsolete, what's not. They provide all of our quotes. Uh, they do all the installation. Uh, everything is pretty much combined with it. Every, every district architect pretty much has a division that is interior design, which is kind of what was in Ross's presentation. He's got a arm of his company that does interior design. It talks about how you can um, how you can couple what it is that he would be recommending with um with space needs if, if, if necessary. That process would work out and the fact that the individuals that work with Ross, they would collaborate with our current architects. Uh, if there was any recommendation that was different than what we were already currently being recommended by LaBella.
Well, he had talked about gaining space based on the, the configurations that will that will come up with, you know, the, the great configurations and I guess the, the buildings that were available, obviously. Those are the two factors. Once you decide on a, on a great configuration within a building, then then you, then you know you need X amount of, you know, first, second, third grade furniture in another building. You, you need something like that. That the way you envision it happening?
Yeah, that, that would be a part of the process. I would say that, you know, right now as we stand, uh, if the board gave the green light tonight to go ahead and order up elementary furniture, you'd probably see furniture start rolling in the doors in April-ish would be my guess. By the time we got through all the buildings and classrooms and made sure we had everything exactly we wanted it uh and then got that order in and then dealt with whatever delays it would be in product or shipping. I think March, April is a pretty fair timeframe to expect some of the stuff to start showing up. Maybe sooner for sixth grade, fifth grade furniture. It's just, it's more standard stock, student desk, student chair, uh that type of thing. Uh, but the process would be you look at where, certainly by the time we get some of this roll and it's gonna coincide perfectly with, with Ross's uh recommendations.
So, so for instance, I just wanted to finish, I guess, the uh so, so we would buy for um X number of second grade classrooms. Regardless of whether those classrooms were in six buildings or in three buildings.
We would buy for the number of second grade students that we currently have enrolled. Uh, and those classrooms, the thing about the furniture outside of kindergarten, because kindergarten has a lot more play-based station type work going on in it than, than a traditional classroom. But those desks and chairs that you buy for those second grade students, if let's say you have a year where you need a one classroom less, they're all adjustable. So that can all be adjusted to move up a, you know, a body size or down a body size depending on if they were going up to third grade or fourth grade or maybe down to first grade. But we would, we would, the only thing you have to worry about in terms of classroom sets really is kindergarten. Uh, because the kindergarten furniture comes with it a whole different set of um pieces that are, are geared for, towards play-based. When you're talking about desks and chairs, you're talking about kids, not rooms.
Yeah, I just had a comment to make. It doesn't really matter what the, the configuration ends up being. You still got X amount of students that give that furniture for, correct?
Correct, yes. The other thing about the current furniture, and I'm sure some of you have seen it in some of the buildings, that they call them the fish-shaped looking desks. Uh, there's fish-shaped desks, there's triangle-shaped desks. The way that the desk can be configured is they're all on wheels and you can create tables out of the desks. So they're a lot more functional than the, the traditional, either am I gonna have tables in my classroom or am I gonna have desks in my classroom? The new furniture allows the teacher to have both a- and change it up in a moment's notice if they desire to.
Okay, Michael, okay. Are we under contract with LaBella for the furniture people to be provided that? So do we have?
Nope, LaBella, just it's a, it's a part of the service that we are. I mean, we already pay for them to do it. It's not, it's not, whether they do it or not, we're paying them for that ability, that access to interior design.
But they don't, do they order the stuff for us? Are they the people that we pay the furniture?
No, 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 no. We order through Meteor Education.
Okay, so my question is, should we be going out for a request for propose uh an RFP to see if that's the company we do indeed want to go with? Because it looks like we'll have another option with Ross Associates. You see what I'm saying now? How do, how would that just, that we're going?
Ross wouldn't be, Ross wouldn't be ordering the furniture. He's not a vendor. He, his group is just gonna recommend options.
I understand that. That's what my question is. So it sounds like we have options now. How is media's, whatever you said was the company that's gonna buy the furniture, will buy the furniture from? How is that decided upon if that was the company we would use?
Meteor has been the company we use through all of our capital projects. Well, we can do an R, we can do an RFP for, for furniture vendor. That's certainly a possibility.
I, I guess, you know, we, we know that we've run into issues and I took care of them. We, we, the way we've always done it is not always the best answer. So we would wanna make sure that we optimize the use of these funds. Have we ever had issues historically with the furniture that we've ordered for, for the remodels?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
But, but um Ross is so here to say they have a company as well. They might be able to give us a, as good a deal or even a better deal. I'm just saying, I just wonder how it came about that media, the media people are the ones we, that's all, that's all.
I ha- I haven't heard anything from Ross saying that they have a company that they buy furniture through. Uh, that's news to me.
Yeah, it sounded like they hit somebody, but I just was, I just, I didn't know.
I can ver- I can verify with Ross. Meteor is the company that every school around us that I know of that buys furniture goes through Meteor. That's that's almost the sole source.
There's not really a lot of.
I can double check with Ross, though. I can ask him about that.
Okay.
And we can do an RFP.
I got something from Dempo.
How long did the RFP process take?
Yeah, I'm not trying to slow it down. Just, I want us to get the best.
Usually from beginning to end, it's at least uh a month, two months, depending on how intensive the interview process would get or what the selection criteria would be.
Peter, is there any thought to maybe uh splitting it up over the first two years just to see, you know, maybe get? Peter, is there any thought to maybe, uh, splitting it up over the first two years just to see, you know, maybe get half of it in? See the functionality, see if it's something that we really like and our teachers and kids are going to like. And then pick up the rest in year two, because it sounds like we're going to be in the same situation with our buildings, at least through next year. Um, as opposed to going all in on this first year.
Yeah, there's nothing, there's nothing stopping us from going, uh, to splitting it up over time. The, the reality is some of the furniture dates back to the eighties. So there's a need for new furniture. Uh, which direction people go in terms of which styles they get is, could be debatable based on the teacher, but there's nothing stopping us from splitting it up. It's the one thing that you got to keep in mind is that you are required to front load the ARP money a little bit in year one. So you want to make sure that you are utilizing enough of the funding in year one to not, uh, get dinged on that element of it.
What, what are those percentages? You know, I mean, obviously.
Year, year one, I think has to be twenty-five percent. It has to be at least twelve and a half in the others. It can't be more than sixty-two and a half in any one given year.
Thank you.
So Pete, as a follow-up to Craig's question, um, for both your first item on, I'm sorry, I have too many copies of this plan now to remember where my notes are. Um, yeah, that was just calculator at the moment. Um, this one is our old email with the seventeen points that we didn't get a response to from.
Yeah, I got it here.
From August sixteenth. So I know that I want to make sure that if we don't touch on any of these points in the conversation. And then this one is my calculator.
Okay.
Um, two of the items on this, the audio enhancement classroom technology in the furniture, I have to follow up with what Craig's saying. Whether you have a quick task force or, or an advisory committee, I think you need to engage the teachers in both of these. I know that you brought the number way down on the technology, but I'm still not comfortable with the, um, with the description. And for the same reason with the furniture, as Craig just pointed out, like it's great in theory for someone here in district office or someone from our architects to be like, this is awesome. This will really work and for it to get into our buildings and our teachers to say, oh my gosh, this makes my life so much harder. Um, you know, it, it goes down to something as simple as the tachyderma pencil theory, right? There's a reason that teachers prefer those because it's less disruptive to their rooms. So I want to make sure that when we're purchasing tangible things, which does make more sense, right? Because this money doesn't keep coming. Um, it, that, this is a long-term purchase. We probably have furniture for fifteen or twenty years. Unfortunately, the high school furniture we know is almost twenty years old and it still seems to be functioning. But I want it to work for the people that are most affected by it every day. So how do we engage them in this decision-making? I think their pods just died. Are you having technical difficulties, Peter?
There you go. I'm on again. So as I mentioned, we already, we've got teachers that have volunteered to check out the audio enhancement. And we've got, we asked the teachers already about the furniture stuff. They've already been asking for new furniture. Some classrooms last year got some new furniture. Uh, with some additional grant money we have, we use it to purchase new kindergarten classrooms and some of the general classroom furniture. Principals have been begging for furniture for a couple of years now. This is not something that is coming from the district office. This is coming from the field. Uh, that we've been trying to find a way for a couple of years how to get it to them because financially it's a, it's a big ticket item. And when you're talking about staff versus furniture, normally the staff wins out. Um, but we're in a position where we don't have to do that anymore. So I, I wouldn't say this is a district office initiative at all. This is something that the teachers have been asking for, principals have been asking for. We're trying to get it to them.
No, I'm not saying, no, I'm saying deciding on what you get. I, I'm not saying.
The gentleman from Meteor goes into the buildings and works with the principals and the teachers to determine what it is that should be going in there.
Okay. Um, you know, and same for the technology. I know one of the big things that came out of our sessions previously was um, teachers saying like a portable camera or something that would just mount to their monitor and dual monitors. That those were one of the big asks and did we ever land on? If that was something we were going to be able to provide for teachers, did it come from another bucket or come from this?
Well, the roving, the roving camera thing is what, exactly what we're proposing to put into all the classrooms. They don't need to worry about clipping in anything. The teacher doesn't even need to focus on anything but turning it on and off. The dual monitor thing, as far as I'm aware, anybody that's asked for it, uh, they don't really need it this year because they're not doing the simultaneous teaching. But anyone that's asked for it, we've worked to get that for them. You gotta remember that the webcams are not, if it's not on your physical computer, it's not wireless. So it's not like you can clip it on something and walk around the room with it. It's not a wireless device. It's got to be, it's corded into something. So it's a webcam, it's a fixed item.
To come up with things like if you're in a science lab, that there are better options than something fixed in the middle of the room. If you wanted to focus in on something that you're doing on a tabletop. So.
Oh, those are, uh, yeah, those are, uh, that would be, uh, we've got those cameras that are going out. Uh, Patrick found brand new, uh, document cameras that are portable. They should be off the buildings now.
Not for a document, for manipulating under.
That's what, that's what a document camera would do. You would focus on something on a desktop.
Okay, Peter, going back to furniture, one of, bottom of my thought with the, the two-year span would be you get a trial runs. I mean, people see something, they think they like it, you get their input, which sounds like you guys are doing. But until you actually use it with kids, I, I think that goes a long way in deciding whether this is going to work long-term or not. And sometimes you decide, hmm, this isn't really working like I thought it would. And this way at least we're not all in, we have a chance to kind of, at least in year two, maybe make some adjustments and look at some other pieces. Almost like test driving it for a year. So that's my thought in splitting that up.
Yeah, that's fair. And like I said, we've had this furniture in classrooms for a few years now in other locations. So we can get some of that feedback as well, uh, already. But there's nothing wrong with, with, um, with spreading out over two years.
So Peter, can you, I just quickly added up this most recent revision you sent us. So there was the CARES money, the CURSA money, which was about six point three million, and the ARPA money, which is about fifteen point three million. When I'm adding up with on these sheets right now as priorities, including your strike crews, I'm getting about five point four eight million. So can you just run us through again? I know the CARES money basically went to the immediate expenses we incurred, PPE, all of those things. So that was off the table. CURSA is the one that we're under the gun to get used up immediately, right? And then we also have to use a percentage of ARPA. So I just want to make sure that we, we, we've covered. Or is there something else coming to get us to the place of how much we have to use of the ARPA? When you talk, when you give us, when you sent us this, are all these items coming out of CURSA or ARPA?
CURSA was utilized as part of last year's expenditures, covered issues from last year. So we're only talking about ARP funds.
Okay.
So that's the fifteen point two million.
So there isn't necessarily a, a plan for the remaining seven, let's say seventy-five percent. It looks like you're looking at about a third of this now. And then will additional things be forthcoming for the remaining ten million?
Nope. It's all, it's all in there. The prior years, uh, prior years are already notated in the plan. Because most of everything we've added is staff, they're continual expense.
So like.
Staff costs are built in with, with wage increases and, uh, benefit increases for the subsequent years.
So student support specialist at a hundred and forty thousand is actually times four?
Well, not totally. It's, it's, it's two people. So then the next year, it's a hundred and forty times five percent for increases to wages and benefits. Then it's that number times five percent for the year after. You have to factor in increases and things of that nature. It's not a straight calculation. It's compounding.
These people are going to make seventy thousand each?
Seventy thousand includes his wages and benefits. You got to remember that every employee, uh, at a minimum is about twenty thousand in benefits up and could be up to thirty-five thousand in benefits, depending on what it is.
Okay. Um, and also the, so the community, um, schools people are going to take on um, being the student support specialist? No.
No, communities, community schools is closer through Bosie's now. Student support specialist will be a new district position.
Okay. Actually, I'm talking about, I think I'm talking about the parent leaves. I'm sorry. It says that, yeah, that has been replaced by a recommendation to create student support specialist positions below for secondary schools, for elementary schools, the district will be participating in a great program through connected community schools. So they're, they're going to be looking at attendance and everything in the elementary schools?
They can take on that role at the elementary level, yes.
Okay. So I mean, what other kinds of things are they going to be doing in the elementary? Or are they just going to be doing what they've already been doing?
They're going to, they're going to continue doing what they've been doing. And we've got more workers this year than we have in the past, thanks to the closure. We've been able to expand that a little bit.
Okay. Okay. I mean, is that going to be like home visits and stuff like that? Are they, is that going to be part of their, what they're going to do?
They will assist us with that if necessary. Yep. They, they pretty much are jack of all trades, the community schools group.
Okay. Cause I know they, we don't have safe schools in the elementary school, right? That safe schools is only in, well, she's in RFA, but I think we talked about having a position for the district, right? For her.
We don't, we don't have an agreement with safe schools currently. No, not anymore.
Right.
Peter, for these restorative practices mentors for the hundred, the seven hundred thousand, um, are we, are you trying to just completely hire brand new people or can, I mean, I just know that we have people in the district to do so many of these things that we can save so much money. We just stipend them some extra money. They know our kids. Why are we not using the talent that we have?
Uh, there's no way our current counseling staff could take on more work, uh, to do additional stuff. So this would be additional staff. These positions could be current counselors that would, by contract, they have an option to do a voluntary transfer. So that is possible. Uh, but there's no way our staff can take on additional work, uh, and continue to do their, their requirements that they have for IEP counseling, for classroom counseling. Uh, just in general, crisis counseling, it, it just couldn't happen.
Peter, can we get some data on that? Because I, I know that Craig had sent you a question recently, but I think only John and I were looped in on the response, but I think it was important that the whole board hears. And Craig and I share concerns about where the social workers have been allocated. And the difference between some of the things you said, the required, the IEP's academic advisement, things of that nature versus true mental health services. And I know at the last meeting, we had a dialogue about, um, the student who came forward about peer counseling. And I know that a big focus for a lot of other districts, because again, we're all in on the NISBA loop, is a lot of these funds have been allocated towards both tutoring and mental health services. And I just don't know that someone who is already bogged down with a huge load of students for the things that you just described, particularly seven through twelve, right? They spend far more time on academic things than they do. Um, and I value our guidance counselors tremendously, but I don't know that they're always available for, um, someone who had a hard day or someone who's going through something at home in the same way as a social worker or a psychologist is. Um, so I, you know, I have concerns about that for sure.
Yeah, we can get that information to you guys. I think Amanda has an update coming for the board, uh, either late October, early November. Uh, but we can work on making sure you have all that information. When it comes to counseling, social work, you guys have to remember that there are IEP mandates that dictate kind of where staffing goes and what's needed. It's a lot like E and L. And then on top of that, then you've got the classrooms that have to be covered. There's a set amount of classroom instruction time per week, per grade level that students are, uh, expected to receive. Most, most schools, including us, struggle to meet that requirement, uh, simply because when something comes up, it, it can pull your staff away from uh, getting into those classroom times sometimes to do that. But we can get that information for you.
Uh, cause I think the question, I, I don't discredit that. I think that's very important and I don't ever want to fall for on those things. My bigger concern is the compounding mental health crisis we have over the events of the last two years. And that the goal of this money was recovery. And are we allocating as much as we need to be towards the extra that we could use temporarily for the next two or three years? To help offset the crisis that we're in. Um, additionally, you know, I, I mentioned briefly tutoring, but you know, we offer a lot of things virtually for kids. We offered virtual credit recovery, but we didn't have bodies. We didn't have live face-to-face people. And these kids have been stuck behind a computer and it's, it's great that they're back in buildings now and I, I hope it's making a difference. Um, and I get where Esther doesn't want us to invest in long-term, you know, it has to be sustainable. But are we allocating enough of this money towards the fixes that it was intended for?
If I could jump in, I mean, how about adding, you know, just saying there hypothetically adding two guidance counselors to support some of these schools that are still overwhelmed, even with the social workers. Um, with the understanding that, I, I, and again, you know, staff better than I, but there must be along the lines in the next three or four years, some counselors who are going to retire. With the understanding that, you know, once those counselors retire, we, we know if those positions go away through attrition. But we get the help immediately in the next year or two or three, depending on when those counselors decide to go. And I'm thinking elementary because I know the need in some of our elementary schools, especially those that took on students from Staley is great. And I just, and I don't, I just don't think it's being met.
We, we're open to looking at anything that the group desires. And that's the, you know, as Craig's pointed out, that's got to always be the plan is, uh, minimas- minimizing the future through attrition. Uh, you know, eventually the money is going to go away. Most districts are telling people they've got a job for three years and they're being laid off. That's not, we do not want to do that. So, uh, I agree with Craig wholeheartedly that anything that we do add, we need to continually make sure that we can absorb that position in five years through attrition, one way or another, which I, I would say we probably will be able to do. Um, depending on what happens with this daily conversation in the coming months.
I think when it comes to the social workers and things like that, it's very important at the elementary level that we definitely have the, some of the same people in place and we're not doing too much sharing so that they can build relationships with kids. When, so they can connect with these kids when the kids are actually in crisis mode to pull them out of that moment. So if we're sharing these, you know, these staffs all over and it's just whoever's available here, let's go talk this kid off a ledge, it's probably not going to work. It's really important that these, um, the staff could stay there and build relationships in specific schools. I personally think, especially the Bellamute and GANs and things like that. They have to be able to be there for crisis management. Well, I don't want to put you on the spot, but as our student representative, as the voice of our kids, and particularly the high school kids. Do you, are there ways that you would like to see more accessibility? I know another student came and spoke to us, like how do we help students know that they're someone that they can talk to if what they're struggling with is not academic?
Um, I think that, um, for me personally, no students really know of any outlets. You know, we think of counselors, those are the only ones you can go to. I don't think many kids know there are a social worker in our school. If we can get that information out somehow, even if we just post it somewhere. You'll play on the morning announcements and I do morning announcements. I just feel getting more people, um, even if we just say like, what's a month of Friday during lunch? You can meet with the social worker, you know, in a group setting because it'd be intimidating to go in just you. So maybe if students come with a friend, you know, give them an outlet, a place to go during lunch. Just so they can, you know, get close with the social worker before going in and opening up, because I feel like it'd be hard just to go in there without knowing the social worker on a personal level yet. So I just think getting the information out there, maybe building more opportunities beyond just going in there alone and have the students be with beyond the counselors.
Yes, thank you.
And I, I mean, same vein, I guess I would say this to know there are other things you feel like your school needs. Are there other things you think that? I, this, I know it's a big document and a lot to digest, but
I don't know if this really pertains to uh, this in particular, but, um, especially being staff president. An issue we really face this year is not being able to do everything we can in our staff room. So right now our staff room is open, um, but we can't run business as normal. So, um, a lot of kids don't really know what staff is and it's our student association. Um, we sell the homecoming tickets, we do heat infusion, just the normal things that kids need to have to feel normal and back in school. Um, now is the first year it's changed, it's all new to us. We're no longer allowed to distribute photos during lunches. We're no longer allowed to sell tickets. And that's going to be a really big struggle for students because not everyone's going to be able to be like, mom, can you wait thirty minutes after to pick me up so I can buy my homecoming ticket? Um, staff has always been an outlet for kids to have, just it's easy. You see the staff rooms always. You see the staff rooms always open, kids can come in, um, you know, there's teachers, and then they help them with tutoring. It's, it's just a nice place to go, cuz not everyone's welcome in the lunchroom, you know, so they just come in here beyond just that. Um, kids don't even know it's staff, but there's always a table outside of staff. And you can get your photos, um, but now kids are not gonna be able to do that during their lunches. So I think it's gonna be a really big struggle, um, from a staff point of view, without kids even knowing. I hear chatter amongst the kids in the hallway, how am I gonna get my homecoming ticket, I can't stay after school? Um, and that's gonna draw a big crowd, so I just feel like we need a better way to figure this out, so it's more the students can have this opportunity they've always had. I just don't think it's fair to the kids that ride buses. And so I think we need to work this out somehow, that we can just get the staff room running as it normally has been.
Yeah, I'm not a hundred percent sure what you're saying is accurate. I think Mr. Blake has some things to say on that, but I've talked to him about it.
Yeah, we, that's what we were talking about before, correct?
Yeah, I would say, Alana, we're aware of your concerns, but what, everything you're speaking about is not accurate. It's unfortunately, it's a, a personnel matter that is not really available for public consumption. But we're aware that there is a concern from the student body, and we're working to alleviate that issue.
So basically, ultimately, they will be able to purchase tickets or whatever during the school day, correct?
There is no reason why they are not able to purchase or distribute anything during the school day at all, none at all. No, there's no barrier to that.
Is the staff room open all three periods?
It should be open, yes.
I just, so now we can start selling tickets and distributing stuff as normal? I was told, I mean, this is just information I'm receiving, that we couldn't do anything with like money during school day. I just, has that changed?
I have to defer to the principal and to Mr. Blake.
Yeah, I I would just reiterate that it's a personnel issue, Alana, we can't really discuss this publicly. But there's no reason why you aren't doing any kind of transacting during the school day, absolutely should be happening.
Okay.
And it may just be a temporary thing right now. So.
Peter, I'm just gonna, I have.
Thank you, Alana.
Thank you, and and I do agree with a piece of that that was part of this conversation is, we are talking about student mental health. And obviously, a more well-rounded school day is the goal. You know, we're hoping that the classes twenty twenty-two are the comeback kids, I tell Ryan that every day. So, you know, we are there to support you guys and hoping to have as normal in here as possible. Um, and for you to be their voice, we appreciate the time you contribute. Um, Peter, I'm just gonna, I'm running through the list from the email from August sixteenth, cuz we did not have a response. I, um, I know what Anna has said, concerns about safety, and I know there have been definitely some things happening, not I know a few things in our district, but definitely in surrounding districts. Um, there's some, you know, behavior things that we didn't have to deal with in the last couple of years and safety concerns. So that, those were a couple of the items on that list, can you speak to that?
I I don't have the list in front of me, if there's something specific, I can. Most of the things on the list, gang, we're already doing, we already pay for our, the general fund.
Peter, but, um, we don't have any security, I'm really worried.
We have open ads for security, there's no applicants. We've done everything we can to increase that. And we, in fact, I believe even last week, we reiterated, we doubled down. I know Brian's doing everything he can to see if people are interested in taking the positions. I've talked to Paul Yannick, our head of security, there just aren't people out there applying for the position. We haven't had an applicant in over two years for open positions.
Why can't we look to an outside company? I don't, I don't.
Cuz we can't because we're unionized, it would violate the union contract.
So what are we supposed to do when kids are fighting? And I'm hearing it, you know, and you see it on Sam Chat, and they're beating the heck out of each other, and there's no teachers to break it off. I mean, we can't just let this happen to our kids.
No one's, no one's suggesting that we let it happen to our kids. The first thing I would say is, I don't think that the violence is as prevalent as people think. Uh, first and foremost, if you spend your time in the schools, you won't see what people perceive it to be. Uh, but all we can do is continue to find, is the most creative ways we can to staff the buildings. I know we've looked at hiring monitors to help walk the halls. Uh, there are possibilities to negotiations with other bargain units to help improve, uh, presence in hallways. But those are all things that are down the road that we gotta work towards. Can't just simply tell people to do something if there's a bargain unit agreement that prevents that from happening.
What about weapons and things like that, or how do we monitor when kids are bringing weapons and stuff in?
Uh, I checked the data on that last year, we had zero weapons incidents at the middle school or the high school last year. Uh, in fact, over the past two years, we have more frequent weapons occurrences at the elementary levels with kids bringing things in by accident than we do at the middle school and high school. So it's, honestly, I I can't think of the last time we had a knife at the high school. So, again, it's, it's all about perception, things are not what people perceive them to be.
Um, and I think this will all be yours, um, and I think you said that, um, Dana had been working on this, um, activities that supplies sensory, steam, hard puzzles, physical books.
Oh, yeah.
Manipulative.
This is the pressure, right? I think that's taken care of, so thank you for that.
Fidgets, okay, um, books, yeah, okay, um. That was security, security, we addressed the. Um, Peter, did we get anywhere? I know we posted for, um, the additional attendance officer. Did that, have we gotten anywhere with that? Cuz that, that was bullet eight on this.
Attendance?
Yeah.
Or isn't it gonna be the restorative practices mentor?
No, but we had posted, in in people operations, we had talked about, you were posting for a second one for the high school. I I thought that was what this bullet was referring to. It says attendance officer was eliminated, and is it possible to reinstate? And I know we reinstated, and you posted for it.
We did, I don't even remember that.
Yeah, uh, maybe two personnel meetings ago.
Yeah, I don't remember that.
Uh, I apologize, I'm drawing a blank on what.
I've been to all of them, I don't remember talking about an attendance officer.
A student support specialist person would assist.
Yeah.
Fine, please.
You don't remember. What they're doing, too.
Okay, I'm just going through the bul- the bullets. Um, okay, so back to the, um, again, item nine here was after-school support for students. I know we are making a bigger investment in the YMCA program, but can you speak a little bit about what we're doing for seven through twelve for after-school, um, intervention and tutoring?
So those are, those are things that we already have in place within the different buildings. Uh, the issue has been with COVID, that we haven't had many of them happening, because we haven't been able to keep kids after school. The other issue you have right now with the tutoring and the after-school programs is just getting them up and running with transportation. Uh, as soon as we can get the, the regular afternoon runs under control and operating, we'll be able to start looking at, uh, those issues. I have spoken with Bruce, the YMCA programs are planning to run again. Uh, and we're planning on hoping to expand that even further this coming year. We're working to try and increase, um, the YMCA's presence and also, well, six elementaries now. And somebody had mentioned something about possible after-school program for pre-K. Uh, they're, they are looking into what it would take to get a, uh, childcare license for after-school at that age level. They're not certain if it's different than the K, K-five, K-six license, but we are looking into seeing what we can do to add some kind of after-school programming at early childhood for those families as well.
Okay, can we go, so, so back to seven twelve, um. I know last spring that the Honor Society students were gonna be tutoring. Alana, do you know of anything that's happening, or any ways that students can reach out, other than a teacher available during the study help period?
Um, I can't really, cuz I haven't really seen much information. I am in Honor Society, but I know kids signed up, I don't really know how far they ended up getting with that.
So is that something, Peter, that we can continue to look into, maybe here, I mean, that's how it works in college, right? You end up going to another student, and it was great in concept when they tried to launch it in the spring, but then things got a little crazy and then school ended. Um, but is that something that we might revisit for?
So I would say, I would say I believe that the Honor Society plans on doing that again. I know we've got an agreement with Hamilton College to do some tutoring with Hamilton College students, and we have a teacher at the high school that has an after-school tutoring program, uh, that also is working on getting up and running, and that is an in-person program. Uh, it's one situation where the transportation benefits us, because the buses aren't available to take kids home until after four o'clock. Uh, so the tutoring program at RFA, uh, should last until, uh, at least four, four-thirty is my understanding. But we, those are all things that we have traditionally done, that we're able to start doing again.
Okay, I, again, just in the spirit of the ESR funding is for recovery, and whatever out-of-the-box way we can connect with kids that does not put them on a Chromebook is probably beneficial.
We can always, we can always incorporate the, the costs and salaries for those programs into the ESR plan and take them out of the general fund. The issue is that might have the general fund for these couple of years, but down the road, when they gotta go back into the general fund, um, now you're looking at having to reduce something somewhere else that's less, uh, less easy to track is the right way to, to describe it. Salaries and benefits are a lot easier to track than, than programming costs.
Well, and I think to Craig, like, we haven't, we're, we're really looking at a recovery time, but as we talked about in ed programs with Chris, you know, we haven't really identified what those markers are yet to, to where kids have experienced learning loss, if they have at all. But just keeping in mind that we did lose a lot of kids who stopped logging on or stopped connecting, and hopefully that personal touch is what's bringing them back, so, um. Literacy, math, um, there was an, a question about are principals advocating for more after-school curriculars, activities or clubs? I think we're still working through all that, but there's a note here in particular about Stroud.
For after-school clubs and activities?
Yeah, so are the principals advocating for more after-school curriculum activities at the elementary and possibly Stroud? So again, I think it was just an item of, I I don't know who had submitted that one, cuz John just compiled the list. But it was really more a question towards, again, giving kids opportunities to interact. I know the busing, again, becomes an issue, but is that anything we're exploring?
Generally, the way that after-school clubs and activities work is the teachers would bring a proposal to their principal. If they're willing to start something, want to do something, the principal evaluates it, uh, works with the business office to see if there's money in the budget, and would go forward that way. So if there are teachers that are bringing forward proposals and ideas, I would think that the principals are evaluating them on a case-by-case basis. I have not been made aware of anything at this point in time that's come forward, but I'm gonna guess it's too new in the year for people to even wrap their head around that.
Yeah, I was just gonna mention, Peter, at the elementary level, last year in our SIG grant, we had that already written in for the four, six schools.
Oh, good.
Um, we, we have that ready for this year too, if we're able to do that, but due to COVID, we're unable to do that.
Right.
We also have some, uh, I believe something written into our four grants, along those lines to, uh, uh, having some more after-school STEM-type programs at, uh, the elementary level. Definitely the four, uh, uh, six schools. That's ready to go, if, if we're able to do that with the funding in that, as for that.
Peter, back to the, um, initial conversation about furniture. Uh, item fifteen on this list was picnic tables or benches to create outdoor instructional classroom areas. Um, is that something we discovered portable, portable whiteboards, benches, even just mats that the kids, elementary kids can take out and sit on, did we look into those type of purchases?
Anything related to that would be something that the principals would request or ask for. I could run by, I could run through them, anything that they might want for outdoor space. The other piece about picnic tables and stuff, I'd have to go through, uh, with Alex and make sure that there isn't anything that, uh, can or cannot be placed on a school property. There's way too many regulations for me to know off the top of my head. But we can, we can always revisit any of those things with the principals and see what their needs are.
I think as long as the mask-wearing is gonna be anything, that that's something that parents are really looking for, is more opportunities to get kids outside. So I'm sure that probably was a driver of that question. And the other was, the, the last, the last item was the item that I had already brought up, which was the basic technology for teachers, dual monitors, cameras attached to monitors, and ease of items that can go with teachers.
Yeah, again, all those things are things that we already can purchase through the RIC, uh, and they're all, it's all adable equipment. So anything adable, we can't use federal funds for.
You have anything else?
Thank you for wanting to revisit that list.
Yeah, thanks for bringing it up. If you go back to the end programs, title update, last meeting, that entitled for, you'll see some of that after school for.
Perfect, okay, good.
Any other questions?
I, I think the other one that I have, Peter, just, I know we had a conversation about it, and again, on a follow-up. On August eleventh, Karen had sent you an email asking for more information about what, um, was under the DEI contract over the, the, since we've had the inception, and where we, what we've asked for, what we've met to now. Um, cuz I don't think I've abandoned the idea of the committee, the, the Equity Task Force, asking for a DEI coordinator. And I think the dialogue that we had, um, at least in small groups was, it, to me, having a DEI coordinator in the district was more bang for our buck of having a full-time person fully accessible to us forty hours a week. So I've noticed that you struck that out on this, but, um, if you could get back to that email from Karen on August eleventh, and we could get more information, so that we really know, um, you know, someone with a job description of our DEI coordinator versus what's, what we've been getting contractually, and, and if that's the right investment for us.
I'll follow up with Karen on what specifically she's looking for, but the recommendation of the task force was not to choose one or the other. It was to have both, a district coordinator and the consultant service.
Because I guess I look at it this way, hey, consultant to me, like, we've hired Ross Haber. Ross is gonna come back to us with a recommendation, and then we're gonna hire the right people to execute the work. So I'm just not sure how long you envision us maintaining this. And again, I think we need historic data to have a better perception of, cuz now we're in our fourth year of that. So I think we just, anyone tell me if it was, we get a turn from the dialogue, do we have, right? Anybody? That was pretty much the conversation that was having amongst the board members. Consulting to us is short-term, so.
Okay, uh, Peter, is there something you need from us tonight, any consensus on anything?
Just as, as far as the positions go, are we looking to do the student support specialist? We can add Thursday, I know Craig had mentioned something about some additional counseling support, whether they be for the restorative practices or not. Uh, we would envision those being counseling positions, can we move forward with creating those, all of those, some of those? Um, if we're gonna do furniture, uh, we can do an RFP or a bid, uh, or we can get going on getting people in to start working with, um, the, the principals and the teachers.
I mean, on the furniture, I know the teachers are pretty anxious to get moving on this, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, for move, um, for moving forward, not.
Yes.
The question is, do we do fifty-fifty, or, or do we go for the whole thing? And he thought, I mean, we know what Craig's thoughts are.
I, I'm okay either way.
Well, if you split it into two years, then we could consider, it gives us more time to reconsider an RFP to see if there are other options out there, then I'm convinced that there are. And this is a thought.
Yeah, I would.
We go ahead with media this year, do it the half, and then take the time to look into. It might be that they're the only option, but at least then we know, we're gonna do diligence to make sure that we're doing, getting the best for what, what there's out there, just a thought.
Okay, so it looks like, like the general consensus is, um, fifty percent this year, if you're going on it. And we'll do an RFP for the other half, just to.
We just think, I mean, we give this chance to talk about it, and I think it's a good idea.
I think any of us would advocate for more mental health support. Um, but just so that, I mean, you met with us last week about your goals, restorative practices and have, is going to be part of the district, you know, what we want as a board for district goals and for superintendent goals. So I think that that is definitely something to move towards as well.
Okay, I think we're good.
Well, if we're gonna do fifty-fifty for furniture, how do we? How do you pick who's?
Yeah, who's gonna get it and who's not?
Yeah. They can't have nothing, like, they need to be, but then even Ridge Mills, one of our, you know, better schools, they don't even have desks in the sixth grade classroom, they have a table. So they don't even, and then Stokes, this one on the back chair, like, they need to be finished. So basically, how are we deciding?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's true.
I mean, you're only asking people to wait a year, though. So, I mean, I guess that would be up to the principals to kind of pick and choose, or talk to teachers who are willing to go through the process. I mean, you're only asking people to wait a year though. So I mean, I guess that would be up to the principals to kind of pick and choose or talk to teachers who are willing to go through the process this year of. You know, choosing something and then others who may not want to, you know, may want to wait and see how it works out. I mean, we'd probably have to involve the principals.
I guess the problem is you have these buildings and how do you allocate?
Yeah, exactly.
Well, that being said, I don't even know that we're going to get everything that we would want this year because like everything, there are manufacturing and.
So then it's really two to three.
You know, we, we, um.
Peter, why don't you get with your people and see if, if the, the half and half will work or not? Just, you know, brainstorming.
Cause I would be all for the RFP to see.
I could certainly do that.
There's someone we can move with the RFP process and make sure that. You're not the only one out there. We can move that up, not.
RFP process can be as short as two weeks, but I would argue that that's not always the most fair way to do something, right? Cause you gotta, you gotta put together what it is you're looking for, then you gotta set the criteria for selection, then you gotta advertise it. I mean, if, if people know you're going to RFP and it's coming, you can usually get it buttoned up in a couple of weeks. I, I would argue that that's not always the most fair way. I don't think that would satisfy the purpose of what we're talking about an RFP for. You can also do a bid, which requires you to go with the lowest possible bidder of whatever furniture is you're looking to do. Um, those are other things we can discuss. We can discuss it for the Thursday night if we would like.
Okay, um, did you want to go into executive session?
If we could, please, it should take all of ten minutes. I sent a link, I don't know who's, uh, manning the command station there tonight. It looks like Chris is. I said, I sent a link to the YouTube at Rome CSD dot org email. So if you just kind of go to that email, Chris, you should see the link.
Okay, so I will entertain and welcome you to an executive session, Craig. And, and. Um, and we're not becoming, to do any more, uh, business when we're done, so. I'll favor going executive session.
Can we say the reason?
If it is for, um, discussing employment of a particular individual.
I don't think you have to stay publicly, that's why I was questioning.
Oh, you guys forgot a question.
Got some of your questions answered at least.